Administration recommendations, but this is the start of laying out all the different potential options that could be used towards solving the budget deficit. If you look at this slide, we'll start and end a brief with a slide that looks like this every week in the upper right-hand corner. I'll try to put a recap of prior board discussions, comments, and where you see over 50% were inclined to save $16 million in one-time funding to soften fiscal year 24 deficits. That is not, that is not a decision that was made by the board, but my understanding of general comments made during the brief. And naturally, we wanted to continue discussion on state bond debt reimbursement and major maintenance. If you look on the upper right, you'll see that if we were to have spent all of the one-time funding from the state, our deficit would be around $100 million. If we preserved the 16 million and met or exceeded our fiscal year 23 projected enrollment, our starting point was about $68 million deficit. So again, when you look at this slide, these are examples of programs that we're looking at and continuing to do staff analysis, and I will hand off to Eric Fisti.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Fisti, the Senior Director for Elementary Education, and I want to give you guys a bird's eye view of some scope of elementary program models that we have for your consideration. I'll start off with some pull-out programs. At the elementary level, we have several pull-up programs in ASD. We have everything from special education, which is a legally required program that we provide, to music, band and orchestra, health, art, PE, so on and so on, several different programs. Here's listed our two, two pull-out models that we deliver for students. The first program I want to highlight is IGNITE, which affects our second and sixth-grade students. Approximately 1,800 students access IGNITE currently, and the cost above our, per pupil is, per student is about $1,300, or $1.3. The overall cost of that program to provide for, for IGNITE services is approximately $2.4 million annually. Largely, those costs are captured in personnel costs. The IGNITE model is district-wide. Some students access IGNITE through a bus-hubbing system to help allow for students who may be at a program that doesn't have a large number of students accessing, but we move students to other hubs to provide access to the teacher. Most of the students access it through direct, direct pull-out model from an IGNITE teacher The second program I'm going to highlight here is our sixth-grade band and orchestra. At elementary, we have, the transition to middle school begins at fifth grade or sixth grade. For those schools that go through sixth grade at elementary level, we do provide band and orchestra pull-out services for students. And that is to help students, when you get into middle school, to have a better leveling access, so that when you come into seventh grade, you're at a stronger foothold for students to access band and orchestra instruction. Currently, approximately about 1,800 students also access band and orchestra at the elementary level, and that cost is $2.5 million. Not necessarily getting into the what-ifs, but you know, one, one potential solution could be, you know, for band and orchestra, if students were to go to a middle school model, sixth through eighth grade, one, one potential option there would be for students to access band and orchestra of sixth grade across all middle schools. But if you were, if, if that program as it exists is $2.5 billion. And lastly, what I want to highlight is our elementary immersion program. At the elementary level, the additional cost factor that second, that second to last column that you're looking at is largely personnel cost again. So what we, we have been doing is, is adding staffing into our immersion programs to help provide the robust instruction that's there. Those costs you will see is equivalent to additional staffing that we provided through unallocated positions to help level classrooms in the springtime to bring up the model. Couple scenarios and schools to highlight there would be Scenic Park Elementary School. Scenic Park, you can see we added in five additional positions to be able to provide support there. That is a growing program. That is a program that will continue to grow as it goes into secondary level. So there's additional costs associated with that as it grows up into the secondary level. The other school to highlight is O'Malley Elementary School. O'Malley is in the middle of its implementation and building. This year, we added two classrooms at O'Malley to support the growing French immersion program. We added third grade this year. We're scheduled to add fourth grade next year, so that'll be two additional teachers. What you want to keep in mind is the immersion model, it really takes two to one. So two teachers, what we normally would do with one, we would do with two because you have the, the target language teacher, and then you have the English language teacher there. So you'll see those costs are reflected in providing that level of service for students in those programs above what our PTR ratios are and what our normal staffing levels are at building level.
And just to point out, you'll see memo 023 tonight, the CERSA reallocation memo for additional staffing. That really was driven because we used nearly all of our unallocated positions for those immersion programs and other school within a school programs during staffing last spring. And so there was, as we're starting to see more students come back to the district, we did need that additional flexibility.
All right. On the next slide that's coming up, you'll see a little bit different look at immersion at the secondary level. Oh, and just for the record, my name's Kirsten Johnson, the Senior Director for Secondary Education. Sorry about that. Back to the slide at hand, you're, you're looking at a class size analysis of our middle school immersion programs. And it's a little bit more difficult to cost immersion at middle school because it's embedded in a student's schedule throughout the day as opposed to being one or two teachers that they have as a whole at the elementary level. They have a part of a teacher for one of their classes throughout the day. And so the, the difference at secondary for immersion is that it really comes down to a choice of what electives are going to be offered to students. And when you're looking at immersion courses, in this class size analysis, what you're going to see is the average class size at every school for core classes, our English Language Arts, our math, our social studies, and our science. Any other elective program is another category that we're looking at, and then we're looking at the average class size for immersion. And what you'll notice is that there is a lower class size at every school in immersion versus their other coursework. And so the, the cost comes in what opportunities we're able to offer kids. So if, if folks are in, our students are in immersion, they automatically have a program that's allocated to them in, in their elective choices through immersion. So at Mears, kids are taking a Japanese immersion elective as an example. If that principal was able to pick a different elective, because our PTR is set at 32 students per teacher, they would be able to offer another elective that could cap out at 32 students potentially. So you're missing about nine seats or students in a classroom. And the other, the other issue that comes up at secondary is, do you offer immersion or do you offer a different type of elective that maybe students would, would like to fill and, and take as an opportunity? And so principals are making very tough choices for either offering an elective that all students can take in their school versus a very finite group of students that can take immersion. So that's the cost choice that principals are making at the secondary level. On top of that lower class size, so as students are taking that lower class size in immersion, those other students that are not in immersion do have to go into a class somewhere else so that the teacher next door may have a much higher class size as a result. So if you look at, this is the class size analysis of middle school, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see the high school numbers. Next slide, please. Oh, oh, sorry. It's me, but it's not changing. Sorry about that. So the next slide that you'll see is high school, and what you'll notice is, as students progress through their K through 12 immersion experience, there is a, there is a drop typically from elementary to middle school in the numbers, and then there's an even more significant drop from middle to high school. And part of that is that in a seven-period day at middle school, you can, you still have elective choices if you're enrolled in immersion. At high school, you don't have as many choices because you have a six-period day. So while I may need to take my PE credits for graduation, I may need to take some other elective choices for college prep or career prep. So then immersion becomes more of a, an obstacle in their schedule, and often students drop that as their choice in high school. So you'll see in this class size analysis between all of our high schools, an even bigger difference between the class sizes in immersion versus core versus elective courses at the high school level. So the, the difference for immersion in secondary is really about choices and, and ability to fill classes.
Question about that?
Yes, sure.
So how do we monetize that? How do we come up with, if we were to do something different in middle school and high school immersion, establish some sort of dollar amount to that value of it?
Sure. I think through the President to Member Donley, to monetize it, I think the best option for us as a group would be to look at alternatives and, and the cost of the FTE associated with immersion now versus other alternatives that we could come up with for immersion, because I think there are different service delivery models that we could look at in secondary. For example, taking a college-level course versus an immersion course in your high school.
Now, this is Mark Stock, Deputy Superintendent. I'd just like to add to that commentary. All of the items that you've heard so far today are things that can be reimagined and provide some level of services in other ways in some cases. And piggybacking on what Dr. Johnson just said, so like in high school, might not be a full immersion class, but you can double-stack your other classes in that language in the school. So it's not immersion, but they are getting experience in that language. So instead of being in a Spanish immersion class, they might take Spanish four, or three, or whatever, and be in a class that, that has that language present, but it's not full immersion. But it's still a way of reimagining or providing that service. Same way, a few years ago, you heard alternatives to IGNITE, ways we might reimagine IGNITE, still serve those children in a way that's at a reduced cost and a different way of doing it. Wouldn't be the same way we're doing it, but it could be different. You heard about sixth-grade band and orchestra, a different way you could probably do it. And I'm just pointing out that the things that have been mentioned so far are things that have some potential to carry on in a different way at some level. Now, it would be hard to do something different with elementary immersion. I don't want to make it sound like we have an alternative for that. We really don't, but the others do.
Thank you. Is there a immersion program at Bartlett, or is that just new because of Scenic Park?
So to, to your question, eventually, there would be Chinese immersion if the Chinese immersion program continues to grow. It's in its first year at Begech currently. So in two more years after this current school year, it would, it would come to Bartlett.
Okay. Thank you. Member Lessons.
This is thinking a little bit on the fly about what I, what I think I understand. So at King Tech, we've generated, with King Tech in a partnership with the Lower Yukon Casco Quim School District, we've generated additional revenue by bringing students from that district and letting them utilize King Tech. I recognize that an immersion program at the high school level requires prior knowledge of Russian or Chinese or any of these other languages, but in, as we think outside the box, I see value in preparing students in Anchorage and across Alaska for a globally connected future. Is there any way that we can partner with districts across the state and offer, I mean, I'm not sure what, but offer a collaboration, is not the right word, offer a seat at the immersion table that would generate revenue for ASD in, in some space? Fill those extra nine seats?
Dr. Bryant?
Absolutely. Those are the types of things that we have to think about. So that, and for example, we have our own state correspondence school that could also increase enrollment in other ways. So those are the types of revenue in scenarios that we're also thinking about. But of course, we also need to look at the cutting expenditures, which is the, the focus of this.
Not seeing any other questions. Let's continue.
Okay. So I wanted to talk through three scenarios that the administration's looking at right now for school savings. On the far left, there's the option, or, or a scenario is to close a building, but keep the school intact and move it into a repurposed school that was also closed. You would do that because of extremely high capital costs. You know, recently, we had a bond fail for, for a new school. Potentially, in a situation, you would move X school over to a whole different building and put them somewhere else. That's one way to look at cost savings long-term, not so much for general, general operating funds. You would save utilities, annual maintenance, things like that, but the whole staff would move. Another scenario that we're looking at is to completely close a school, and those students would now go to other schools. And if that school needed a significant amount of capital costs to either replace it or significant major modifications, then you would close it and, and eliminate that building. You can see, as you look down from top to bottom, on a generic elementary school, the annual staff costs are about $717,000. You look at the addenda, utilities on average, annual maintenance, and that's how you get to the cost savings annually. If you look at the bottom third, what you'll see is a net gain/loss to district costs. That number keeps going down from your initial savings because of the hold harmless form, the hold harmless formula. So the first couple of years, you get to retain as if all of those students were still in a small school, and that number gets smaller and smaller until ultimately by year five, by design, you no longer get credit for having closed that school. That was passed about three years ago, four years ago, at the state level, and the intent of it was not to permanently pretend there were students in small schools, but to allow the district several years to find realignments and cost savings and reductions in order to ultimately be able to absorb that difference. And then when you look in the middle on, on new revenue and expenses, obviously, if you close, close that school, you wouldn't have rental fees that maybe you would get normally, and there certainly could be new bus routes associated. So this is a generic school, not by name, using averages of multiple elementary schools. If you look at the third scenario of closing and repurposing a, a school and then moving a charter school over to it, what you really see in the difference is, we took out the long-term capital savings as we looked at decisions by the board on Aquarian. Potentially, that may continue into the future. As far as utilities and annual maintenance, the charter school may pick up those costs, but you know, it would, it would depend on what actually moved in. So this is just a hypothetical scenario, which really shows the same kind of, initially, for every single school you did this for, you would save over half a million dollars if it was a generic elementary school, and then ultimately by year five, just because of school size factor, which is the very first step in the foundation formula. Ultimately, the formula's designed to provide less revenue per student in a larger school.
Jim?
Oh.
Could you go back to that slide?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So given these scenarios, how many schools are we talking about here? One, two, three, four?
Each one of these is just one.
One school.
Each one of these is just one school, and this is hypothetical scenarios and not necessarily what the administration will bring to you in terms of an actual number of recommended closures.
Okay. So this is what, the closing one school under three different scenarios?
These three scenarios. So we have contracted with Shannon Bingham from Western Demographics. Some of you may recall him from years ago. He tried to help us close some schools, reboundery. He can do live reboundering on the fly with the software he has, trying to determine what students, what types of student needs would be moving to different schools. We don't have that capability in-house, so he's going to rejoin our team for this school closure effort. And he also is, he has helped 200 districts across the nation close schools. His expertise is in school start time studies and changing school start times, school closures, reboundering, rezoning, and he'll be joining us within the next week to two weeks as he helps us work through this.
Okay. Member Higgins and then Member Holloman.
Thank you. Just from a little background standpoint, when I got on the board, when it came to charter schools, the administration's view was pretty much, they want to be on their own, they can worry about their own space. And they took a very strong position that way, not supportive, in my opinion, of what charter schools are doing, which has always been a serious concern because there's a lot of safety concerns associated with construction of schools that don't meet school standards. They're, they're like a strip mall in some cases, and in a big earthquake, I don't know what's going to happen. One of the things the legislature did was said if you got free space, you need to offer it to the charter schools. But we also have the ability to say that we want them in our schools if we have free space and we can put them in schools and provide for the safety of those kids that we don't have. These options of closing schools could be offset somewhat by having charter schools move into them and move away from schools that are just structurally not as safe like our school districts. I remember one story with China where they had an earthquake and basically the next generation was wiped out by schools. I'll never forget that one. But there, we build our schools like we do hospitals and everything else to survive, and the charter schools are not in those type of locations, and those are our kids as well. So my question is, what can we do to offset the closures here by looking and saying that closures ought to be in places that aren't safe? And if we put charter schools in these schools with the idea of protecting those kids, which is our primary responsibility, nothing's more important than the safety of the kids, what are the options there? And has the school district looked at what they could, that could be, that could be a change, rather than closing schools that are well-built for safety and looking instead at maximizing those schools for safety of kids?
Through the President to Member Higgins, that's exactly what we are doing. If you look at the second scenario, that was closing a school that potentially either is not safe or requires a significant, well, it is safe or we wouldn't have people in the school, but it would require a significant amount of capital maintenance. When you look at that third, that is specifically closing a school and repurposing it for either district opportunities, consolidation of district requirements, or charter schools. And we absolutely would look at moving charter schools, and we know, we have a charter school that's not homeless right now, but, but it is on the second floor of a high school. Schools like that would certainly be looked at when we come up with repurposing. But we are not at the point in the staffing process to even identify the schools by name, so we certainly are not at the point where we have homes for charter schools yet. But it, it will certainly be looked at.
Follow-up?
That doesn't work. The amount of money that charter schools are spending on, you know, these inexpensive places, I'll call them that because they're relative to the quality of the education school system, they're poor. How much they're spending there, if those are being contributed back to the school district, how much will that offset things in regards to not closing but utilizing that space in a better way? I know we got quite a few kids in charter schools, and I had a problem with one school that was built because it, it simply didn't meet it in the first earthquake, and we had problems. So I just, I just really want to see, you know, I really want to maximize that. I had a discussion last week in June with someone that talks about they're trying to put together some type of committee dealing with these type of space issues. I really don't want the, the state that heavily engaged, but the idea is reasonable, in my opinion.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Holloman?
Thank you. In the close-one-school scenario, does that, the changes in cost and revenue, does that include the fact that the destination school may be elevated in size? Or is that just looking? See a nod yes from, okay. And I also apologize, I didn't quite follow on the first scenario, closing a building and moving one school, simply moving the students into another existing school and just closing a school. Thank you.
Member Donley?
Thank you. And Mr. Bingham was here last time. He mentioned to the board, he testified, that a lot of the school districts he'd been working with on reorganization and closing down schools were also instituting more K-8 schools in those districts. And it occurs to me that that should be an option on the table to utilize some elementary schools that have, are not close to their capacity to possibly turn into K-8 schools, and if it was structured right, we could shut down a middle school.
Through the President to Member Donley, we, we will look at that. As you know, the, the middle schools are so much larger than any one elementary school that, that's certainly a, a challenge. In fact, as you heard earlier in the brief, we are currently also looking at making all middle schools 6'8" and all elementary schools K-5. There's a number of scenarios in the lower 48. One of those is K-12, but there's also districts who've gone 6'8" at all middle schools. So I, I think the number of options is endless as to how we could look at it. I can tell you what we expect to do is to be able to finish analysis very quickly to be able to name initial potential school closures, so the board and the community have time to talk about it, receive input, for the community to provide feedback, hopefully with the board voting and approving on that list in November, so we know as we get into starting to build the budget, that, that we start getting some commitments as we get toward December, so we, we have a good idea of what's in the, what, what should we include when we build the budget in January and, and the areas that are still up for discussion.
So when will we, at what point will we survey the community on, or get input from the community?
So what you will see is the first survey going out this week. Because we're going to have multiple surveys between now and the beginning of December, this first survey will be a prioritized ranking of eight to 10 areas, everything from school supports through facility closures and activities, breaking out those major subgroups in order to start getting the community to think about, not the specifics of one individual program, but in general, where do they prioritize all these different choices that either the board makes or they make? And then they'll get more detailed as the months go along.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, why don't you continue?
So one of the first solutions that's been mentioned is moving all sixth-grade elementary students to middle school. Currently, we have three middle schools with sixth grade and in certain areas of town, and then all of our other sixth graders in other areas of town attend their elementary school, neighborhood school. So if, if we pursue this option, we would look at boundary changes, what the bus requirements are, we would do a full evaluation of what that cost would be, and we would also look at the benefits of moving students to middle school as well in the sixth grade. We already discussed one here today as a potential for band and orchestra. If students were moved to sixth grade rather than having band and orchestra once a week, they could potentially have it every day as an elective. There are some academics scenarios that improve, such as students with advanced math needs in the sixth grade have more ready access to that advanced math instruction at the middle school level. Those are just some examples of, of the positives of moving sixth grade up to middle school, and it also creates continuity in our community amongst sixth graders and the experience that they're receiving. So those are all things that we would look at. We would also cost out in terms of services that students need at that level and what that would look like in our staffing model when we're looking at solutions to our budget. that would look like in our staffing model when we're looking at solutions to our budget.
And then the Ignite transformation. So essentially eliminating the pullout model would be one option to be considered. But next steps is looking at what that looks like from, from the instructional changes that have to happen as well as the FTE requirements. We talked a little bit at the elementary level about the immersion. There's need to continue to investigate and look at options in terms of how to transform immersion at the elementary school.
Sorry, thanks Eric. So looking at immersion at the secondary lens too, we would look at some different types of solutions. We, we kind of dove into that a little bit when we were talking about the class size analysis at secondary. There are options to look at in terms of, do we want to offer, as an example, a K eight immersion program with students achieving their language needs in a different manner at the high school level? That could be one potential solution. Do we want to look at a K 10 program where students could then access our Alaska Middle College School for Advanced Language at the upper grades? Those are all things that we would like to cost out and look at the, the benefits versus, you know, costs for that particular program while still meeting our student needs in immersion in particular. One of the things that I think our community values immensely about the immersion program are the cultural aspects at the secondary level in terms of travel and being immersed in, in different languages and countries and cultures. Those are things that we could still do in a different manner. And the seal of bi-literacy achievement that many of our graduates obtain before graduation, those are things that we can also do to maintain those opportunities for kids, but looking at the, the instruction delivery a little bit differently at the secondary level. So those are all things that we'd like to cost and explore as a potential solution moving forward.
And then finally at facilities, we'll still be working with Shannon Bingham, of course. He'll help us identify some things that we haven't been able to see as we look at schools for potential closure or repurpose. He'll assist us certainly with boundary changes required. And then we're going to start, Dr. Mike, Dr. Michael Aix has already set the stage so he can also start looking at validating student needs going from a closing school to a gaining school to make sure that we have appropriate supports at those gaining schools to assist them. So if you look at the budget timeline, we're clearly in September each week or at least one survey. We're refining the list of schools and we're also continuing to do deep dives on programs and costs that can be avoided. Toward the end of this month, we'll brief board members hopefully one-on-one or one-on-two so we can talk to you before the first of October about potential schools that would be named as well as principles for gaining, losing schools and of course APA leadership. As we move into October, that's really why the community discussions have been planned for so long as we know that it impacts people personally from either a closing school or a gaining school. Many of us have some experience about the emotion involved with, certainly after the earthquake with greening in Negro River Elementary. And we have many lessons learned on how to help communities, help them understand why we're, we're making the recommendations we are, what we're going to do to remain focused on students. Because that's what a parent's biggest concern is, is not a BSA number or a dollar amount for the district, but what are we doing for their students? And, and as we go through those town halls, I think the board will have an opportunity to hear their concerns. Hopefully by the end of that month, you'll start seeing that, that we're able to provide information that, that helps people become more welcoming of that over other choices that are also very, very difficult. But I suspect that those discussions will continue either in person and/or Zoom in some remote way all the way through this semester as we work through this. And then again, sometime in the November timeframe, we probably will ask the board to go ahead and, and vote just to give us an idea of, are you okay with this so we can move forward? Because we have an awful lot of areas to look at and it's the same staff members.
Have a question. Member Donley?
So we're looking at a minimum of $60 million deficit. And even assuming we could successfully close five schools and assigning, I think, an extraordinary generous, generous amount of savings to middle school immersion and high school immersion reductions, it only totals up to about $15 million. It's only 25% of our gap.
Through the President to Member Donley, I think I've been pretty clear that we couldn't bring out absolutely everything in the first month because the staff is working on developing costing models for a lot of things. If you look at, I think it was the second slide, there are a lot of things on this slide from top to bottom that we're going to be reviewing and bringing to the board to include a review of S R two and three fiscal year 23 cost that maybe can be avoided. We're going to look at one-to-one costs in software district-wide. We're going to look at everything from insurance coverage limits to student nutrition debt practices. And everyone, everyone can read as we move down, we are, we are going to look actively at sports and activities. We have a lot of things to still staff out and start bringing to the board. And as we initially bring them to the board, we, we won't have every answer for every question. They're going to be developed over the next several months, but we have to keep adding things to the plate, refining our staffing, getting the metrics, doing the analysis and making sure that the board and community realizes that by December, when the board is giving final guidance for us to go into build the budget in January, that hopefully by that time, we will have more than $68 million worth of possible options. But the truth is that many of those options are going to be difficult to make, but we have to make them. We've got to get by state statute a balanced budget. But this is the month of September. We're not in December yet. There's going to be more things that come out and many of those people are not going to be comfortable with. But, but that's the sliding scale. And I want, you know, frankly, to close every brief with a sliding scale. And this is the updated one. If you were to eliminate hypothetically sixth grade band and orchestra, Ignite Elementary, I didn't include any of the secondary, then now all of a sudden you're bringing down your deficit hypothetically to about 60 million. So over the course of several months, you will see the sliding scale continue to get closer and closer to the green. And, and it's, I, I think most of the board understands at some point, there are some other options that don't involve people, which is the use of fund balance or other things that you can do to get to that final zero. But between now and the end of November, we need to bring you more and more products until we have a path to zero. And then whatever that path to zero is, I suspect the very last thing we'd look at would, after fund balance would be PTR. But that's the plan.
Yes. Thank you, Doc.
Yes, I'd just like to point out, you know, a fair question is, so when the academic services team is looking at potential recommendations to bring to cabinet and folks before we would ever put something in front of the board, you know, what a fair question would be, what are the kinds of things, things that we consider before we would bring it to cabinet for another debate? And the, the things that we would look at would be, number one, the, the impact that it has on students, the scale and the scope. So some programs are highly valuable for limited numbers of students. Some things are somewhat valuable for 40,000 students. And so one of the things we have to debate is, what is the potential impact on the students themselves? Scale and scope, two different concepts there you have to think about. Another one is the amount of savings it generates. Sometimes some of the things on here, as Dr., as, as Mr. Donley pointed out, don't really generate the full amount of savings you need to get to the deficit number that we need. So there, we have to look at the size of the savings when you do that program. And a third one would be, what are the things that can be done a different way or reimagined? So there might be some things we can provide some service to that's not as good or as robust as what we've been doing, but we can do it a different way, so we should do that. So those are the things that we're looking at. And I know that the team that I work with, we have a list of 22 different programming needs that we're looking at and we'll go through, starting tomorrow morning, some, some rating systems where we debate those programs based on those three things. So those are the kinds of things that we have to consider before we would ever put something in front of cabinet to debate and then eventually to the board to debate.
Probably something worth considering is that it is possible the state won't find or come up with a permanent inflation-proof funding formula in next legislative session. So even if it's two and a half million or three million, it's two and a half million every year for the next several years or three or whatever that number is. We still have a plan for federal relief money next year, but just not enough. So that means the year after, there is no federal relief money left. So I don't think that what we're going to be discussing this year, some of those things that were unpalatable and not supported will be brought up again if the state doesn't find an inflation-proof education funding mechanism.
Questions? Member Higgins?
I guess I just want to go back to the issue. I know we've got timing frames here, but the goal is to improve academic outcomes too. I mean, I know the deck, the deck is stacked against us, but the quicker we get to the point of deciding how we can spend money towards academic improvement without just stretching on status quo is what's critical. I am not interested in seeing all of this year lost to where we can end up saving money and carrying it forward in two years. I'm interested in what we can do now in the way of financial changes to improve those academic outcomes that are just awful right now for kids that are in our school system. We've got to improve that one way or the other, whatever it takes. And I guess, I don't want, I want to make sure the goal, the number one goal is kids always in the school district, safety there, but academics is critical. And so maintaining status quo or being able to reduce the impact in two years is not a concern to me. I am more concerned about whatever changes we have to do financially, whatever it takes to be able to devote money and resources to improving academic outcomes.
Thank you, Member Higgins.
Through the President to Member Higgins, that's a great point. And, you know, we're in a place where we have to walk and chew gum at the same time. So we will be looking at the budget because at the end of the day, we'll have to pass a balanced one early spring. But you're right, we can't waffle on improving academic outcomes for our students that are in classrooms today. So do know that we are looking at our academic strategy, everything from leadership development to what's happening in the classrooms to all the inputs to academic output. We're not going to wait until we know what the budget is. So just know that we're, we're doing both. That's why it's going to be a very busy year for all of us, but we know the work is very important.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
I do want to say I really appreciate the work the staff has done on this and it's, you know, this isn't very specific, but it's a little more specific than what we knew a few weeks ago. And as it gets more specific, it's more depressing. And I, I see a conflict where I understand what Member Higgins is saying. These programs really matter to certain kids and, and that is the source of the achievement, some of the achievement that we have. As we start to put names on programs and price tags and everything, it's, it's going to be very difficult, knowing some of the kids that have gone through Ignite and knowing some of the kids in immersion programs. It has created a level of engagement that spurs academic success. And it's not always just from kids that would have been successful anyway in a normal classroom. Which, which is a thing that always hangs me up about sports and some of our club activities is there are kids on those teams that would be dropouts without those programs. And so unfortunately, when we cut those programs, we cut basic success for some kids. And, and it's really hard to measure. Yeah, I know you go through and have to put dollars and cents on it and that's a, a really truly tough thing to do. It looks like a remarkably depressing year. Thank you for making it kind of clear from the outset. But, but every, every one of these is a program that means the world to some kids. And we're going to, we're going to be forced to take that away as we go into it. I think we need to remember that, but also try to explain to the public what it really does mean. I mean, we're, we're getting hit pretty hard. One, about the overall success, which, you know, is always narrowly focused on the proficient and not proficient, rarely seems to eliminate the remarkably proficient. And the kids that wouldn't be on the borderline between proficient and not proficient, they'd be way down there except we did manage to get them to the point where they're at least on the bubble. All of that is happening. And at the same time, the public is being fed the idea that we're spending most of our day talking about sexual orientation issues and critical race theory, which from my experience in the classroom, almost never comes up. I, it's, I think 98% of our time is spent on other things. So somehow we do need to convey to the community that some of these programs are at risk. We know what happened when we looked at reorganizing Ignite. I can only imagine what immersion families will start to do once, once this circulates among them that we're possibly looking at eliminating a program that is remarkable on a national level and the opportunities that it's created. Admittedly for a relatively small percentage of our kids, but it, but it's created a remarkable opportunity. So it does, I really do appreciate your work. I, I know it's incredibly difficult. And of course, the decisions as we go forward are going to be as well. But it will, I think, be a pivot point where we do have to ask the community, these are the things we're doing, are you willing to pay for them? I know there's a strong chunk of the population that absolutely will, will say tax me to make this happen. I've seen it happen in public meetings. It's not everybody to be sure and probably not a representative cross-section. But as a community, we're, it won't just be us making that decision. We need to make sure that we've got the community on board, whichever way we go, whether we make these rather severe cuts or whether or not we raise the price tag of education in order to keep some things that are doing really well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Member Jacobs. You have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Men President. While I was listening in online, I, I heard something that made my ears perk up and that there's going to be debate, debate amongst staff before it's moved to the cabinet and finally presented to the board. Probably won't come as a surprise to these some of you, but I'm very interested. I came away with the thought of thinking, I wish I could listen in on that. I wish I could be a fly on the wall so I can get as much information as possible as we're tasked with making some really hard decisions. And I understand why that isn't feasible, while you don't want seven board members sitting in those conversations. But to the extent as we're briefed going forward, encapsulating that discussion that, that got us to this point so that we have an informed decision that we can make and seeing all sides of, of the debate as we move forward, I think it's going to be really important. So that's my fervent desire and I hope we can have those facts going forward. Thank you.
So we are at time. I, I do want to thank all the staff for the work. You know, when I look at this list as a mom and a grandmother, I depend on and love immersion, the middle school concept. I, I just love what this district provides to parents, the choices and for our kids. And it is depressing that we have to really look at how we can meet a hundred million dollar deficit. I, I mean, I'm hoping it's less than that, but whatever amount it is, we've got to, we've got to do a balanced budget. So I look forward to the survey. I look forward to having the conversations as we build a 23, 24 budget. So thank you guys. And with that, oh yes, you have one final comment?
We talked about the pupil teacher ratio. In my, my twins' high school right now, every class but one has either 35 or 36 kids in it.
With that, oh, Member Lessons.
I appreciate understanding the path that we see ahead of us. It's not going to be pleasant. I guess this is more of a comment beyond this room. I hope that as members of the public see this on the news or read about it or talk amongst their friends and peer groups, that they consider engaging amongst their friends and peer groups, that they consider engaging their legislators or the candidates for legislative office to say why a language immersion program matters to them or why their school matters to them. Because this, as we've said before, is coming after six, seven years of a structural deficit. And it didn't happen overnight. And now we are tasked with dealing with it.
And with that, I'll take a, we need to move into executive session? I need a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of legal and contracts and negotiations?
So move, Madam President, in a second.
All right, we are moving into executive session. Thank you, staff. You guys?